All right, perfect. Welcome to our September 1st, 2022, Maricopa County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we'll take a roll call.
Chairman Limblum.
Here.
Vice Chair Slasher. Commissioner Arnett.
Here.
Commissioner Swart.
I've lost all visual, but I still have the ability to hear you, and hopefully you can hear me, but I lost the entire screen, and I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Montoya. Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
All right, great. We'll go ahead and I'll read some announcements about this meeting, and how we'll conduct it. This meeting's been noticed in accordance with open meeting laws, according to Arizona Revised Statutes, Section 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office, and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to hearing at www. maricopa.gov/planing. The staff reports prepared for each agenda item shall become a part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to this hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission, and for each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case shall fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance or raise your hand within the go-to webinar. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. The chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only, and the chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. So, getting that business out of the way, we'll go ahead and move to our next item, the minutes for July 21st, 2022, and August 4th, 2022. Are there any comments from the commission on these minutes? If none, those minutes are approved. And we have any staff announcements on the agenda?
No, sir, but if you'd like, we have, sorry, I'm sorry, we do. On the consent agenda, we have items 3, 4, and 5 for Sunrise Ranch to be pulled for regular discussion.
Okay, we'll go ahead and pull items 3, 4, and 5 from the consent agenda, and move those to the regular agenda. We can move into the rest of the continuance agenda, which is items number 1, Z 2021-137, and items number 2, Z 2022-075. If staff would like to present on that.
Mr. Chairman, I failed to make one other announcement.
All right, let's back up.
On the phone today, we have a new planning and zoning commissioner, TJ Mitchell, representing District 3.
Awesome.
He wanted to be here in person, but circumstances arose, so.
Well, we're happy to.
We do have nine commissioners present.
That's a great attendance, and welcome, Commissioner Mitchell, for your first planning and zoning meeting. We're glad to have you join us.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be on board. And like Darren said, I wish I could be there in person, but I have a bit of a flu, so hope to be in person for the next meeting.
Well, enjoy the virtual option while it lasts, so.
Appreciate that.
All right.
Chairman, we have two items to be continued at the applicant's request, both to September 22nd, 2022, therefore no actions required by this board. Those items are, in District 5, Z 2021-137, EnviroTech Group, a zone change to Industrial 2, IUPD, for a 12-acre site southwest corner of Campbell and 355th Avenue, and in District 2, Z 2022-075, known as NWC 202 and Apache Billboard, and this is a zone change to C3CUPD to accommodate a digital billboard face on a half-acre site located northwest corner of Apache and 202 freeway. Again, both of these requests are by the applicant to be heard on September 22nd, 2022, therefore no actions required. They will automatically be on that agenda.
Thank you. Thank you for correcting. That was the continuance agenda, I said, I think consent, but so no actions required, those two items, number 1 and 2 on the agenda will be continued to September 22nd, 2022. And now we will move into our consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there's a single item on consent that is Z 2021-075, known as Bennett Auto in District 1. This is a special use permit for a home-based cottage industry in the Rural 43 zoning district on a site just under 1 acre at the northwest corner of Empire Boulevard and 203rd Way in the Queen Creek area. There's no known opposition to the special use permit, although the case is the result of a zoning violation due to SIS complaint. Staff has received numerous calls of support to the actual special use permit. The recommendation in Paragraph 20 is for approval, subject to conditions A through I. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Gerard at this time, by the commission? Any discussion that would like to occur, and if not, I'll entertain a motion.
As Commissioner Hernandez, I'll make a motion to approve a consent agenda item Z 2021-075, as presented by staff.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez. Do we have a second?
Second.
And who was that, just for clarity?
Commissioner Lawrence.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. So we have a motion by Commissioner Hernandez, and a second by Commissioner Lawrence. Let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slasher?
Yep.
Chairman Limblum?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of 9 to 0.
Perfect. Thank you. We have a 9 to 0 vote, so we will approve that and move forward to our regular agenda items, number 3, 4, and 5. If staff would like to present, is that you, Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Chairman Limblum, and members of the board. Cases CPA 2021-012, Z 2021-074, and S 2021-020 are for a general comprehensive plan amendment, zone change with overlay and preliminary plat for Sunrise Ranch at South Mountain, a Bellafloor residential development with 101 single-family for-sale lots. Next slide, please. The total site is approximately 58.04 gross acres and 57.42 net acres, and is generally located at the southeast corner of 35th Avenue and Olney Avenue in the Levine area. Next slide. The site is located currently in the Rural 43 zoning district and is in Supervisor District 5. For the comprehensive plan amendment, the applicant is requesting to change the land use designation in the Levine area plan from open space and rural to large lot residential. So the rural designation is 0 to 1 dwelling units per acre. The large lot residential would be 1 to 2 dwelling units per acre. The proposed net density of the site is 1.74 dwelling units per acre. Next slide. For the companion zone change case, the request is for a zone change from Rural 43 to R118 RUPD. The applicant is requesting to vary the standards for lot area setbacks, lot width, and lot coverage. Next slide. And as noted, the plat request is for 101 lots. There are approximately 26.6 acres, or approximately 46% of the site is reserved for open space. These cases were moved to the regular agenda because staff began receiving opposition after the staff report was published, and the commission has received a handout including those opposition letters. Currently, there are 39 individuals opposed. In total, the staff received a couple of late letters that were unable to be transferred to the commission in time, and those will go with a report to the board when that occurs. As noted, the opposition letters are focused on the density proposed for the site, and some of the letters are requesting that the applicant remove some lots from the proposal. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting earlier this year that was attended by 35 participants, and as a result of the feedback at the meeting and through public participation, the applicant, according to their narrative, revised the design to pattern landscaping in accordance with similar communities, include view fencing along the canal, provide buffers to the site, provide rural Levine wall themes and entry monuments, committing to dark sky requirements of Maricopa County, including shielded downward directed lighting. They also added a condition that requires notes on the plat that discloses to future tenants that they are in proximity to an active agricultural use area and potential for non-domestic animal keeping from other property owners. They also added a condition requiring the plat to note the proximity of an active aviation use at Hanger-Hossi End as a private Hanger subdivision. Staff received no comments on the proposal from the city of Phoenix. The applicant's narrative did note that the applicant spoke with the city of Phoenix regarding a potential annexation of the site and utilities following the determination of the CPA's own change of preliminary plat. Arizona Game and Fish also provided comments related to wildlife protection that are standard relating to construction practices that the applicant will need to address prior to any construction permitting occurring. Ultimately, staff is supportive of the comprehensive plan amendment, the zone change, and the preliminary plat for the following reasons. For the CPA, the applicant has demonstrated that the request represents an overall improvement to the comprehensive plan, in that there are several benefits, including additional future revenue and the potential for the creation of 290 full-time jobs based upon projections from National Impact of Home Building and Remodeling Report. Surrounding developments adjacent to the proposed developments, such as Carver Canyon, Whispering Hills, located within the city of Phoenix, have some similar densities. Surrounding communities also have similar zoning as well. And this suggests, along with the availability of urban services and utilities, that the CPA and zone change requests are appropriate. Additionally, the proposal as a whole is respectful of the original Levine area plan, open space land use designation, because it preserves a great deal of open space in the hillside portion of the site through the plating process. Additionally, the applicant's narrative and documents associated with the plat suggest that the community will maintain a relatively rural character in keeping with the original rural designation while allowing for some additional density. There are some quality recreational amenities, including an outdoor lounge area, a tot lot parked with fruit trees, and the preservation of most of the hill area on the site. And lastly, while the city has not commented, the applicant has agreed to a staff condition to be applied to the zone change in preliminary plat, requiring either a utility services agreement or pre-annexation agreement with the city of Phoenix prior to final plat approval. And at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Are there any questions by the commission for Mr. Cannon at this time? All right, hearing none. We'll go ahead and if the applicants here would like to present, we can have them come and present this case to us. Let's go ahead and state your name and address, and we'd love to hear your presentation.
Chairman, members of the board, is just checking the microphone working. Everyone can hear me virtually. I hope so. If I need to speak louder, I can. Reese Anderson is my name, and I'm with the law firm at Pue and Lake. My address, for your record, is 1744 South Al Vista, number 217 in Mesa. I didn't bring a jacket with me, but walking over, it was still warm outside, and so forgive me for not having a jacket on just yet, even though it is September. And anytime I can match my friend Wayne Peck and wear a jacket and a tie, I want to pay homage to him. Members of the commission, staff has done an excellent job of giving you the basic parameters of this project, and we think it's a well-designed, well-thought-out, with a lot of citizen input on it. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to reach agreement on density, and I think that seems to be the sticking point. If you looked at the opposition letters that came in, they all seem to focus on density and lot sizes, and I know there's a couple citizens here that will speak to that. So it might be best to reserve some of our time to come back, and so we can focus on the right issues. I do have a short presentation. I will run through some of the slides very quickly, and then I can answer some questions. And then, you're helping me. You're my co-pilot today. Thank you very much. So if you could start, yeah, go to the next slide. Again, not spend a lot of time here. We're about 58 acres right here on 35th Avenue, which, if you know, is undergoing a major improvement right now with the county transportation department, where they are flattening and straightening out the curve that went over Carver Mountain. And what's interesting about that, I think, is that before this developer, Bellafloor Communities, who we represent, even closed on this property, partnered with McDott to dynamite that mountain, even to a greater extent, allow for future road widening, because we will have to do additional traffic improvements. Instead of blowing up the mountain twice, we've done it before. And you may say to me, hey, Reese, that's all money, but I would just ask, take it as a sign of good faith, of the commitment of the developer to the community, to be the least intrusive, best neighbor they can, so that we're not having to shut the road down unnecessarily for additional dynamiting later. That's done at great expense, but just take that, please, as a sign of good faith. Go to the next slide, please. Next slide here is really just kind of showing where some of those slope lines are, that yellow line showing where some of the mountain, and that becomes important when we start talking about density comparisons in a second. Next slide, please. So that's our request, general comprehensive, or comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning and preliminary plat, please. Next. Adam did a great job covering these, so we won't go very fast. When we met early on with the Levine citizens responsible, and we've met twice with that group, the request that came to us was, keep your density under 2. We've done that. In fact, we are 1.74, so we think we've exceeded what that request was. They want us to stay with R118 zoning, and that was important because of what's happening in the area overall. So even though the lot sizes might say, well, you should be a little bit lower, we've exercised the R118 RUPD to make sure that we're meeting their expectations and their standards, and working closely with staff, we've achieved that. We coordinated the landscaping, as Adam spoke to. We additional, we pulled, I mean, we've done a lot of things here. So when allegations are made that we haven't worked with the community, as Adam pointed out, we pulled stuff back from 35th Avenue. We've added additional landscaping. The walls and theming are the agrarian. There's walking paths that connect to the canal. There's internal walking paths, and even fruit trees by our internal amenity, which is a really nice area to have. Next slide, please. So here's the site plan. As you can see, the darker colored lots on the south are larger in size. The yellow ones are the smaller, although to me, when you look at, what is the average lot size? And in your staff report, you can see there, when you say, okay, what is my average lot size compared to my overall acreage? And we're 22,000 and change per lot, is what that works out to be. So it's a unique one, where we find ourselves in a position arguing that a density of 1.74 is small lots, and we're cramming them in. I mean, I've never, that's been an interesting one that we rarely come across, where you're saying, hey, this is not compatible. Next slide, please. You're just zooming in a little bit there. Again, drawing your attention to the right side, where there's a break in the brown lots, that's a trail going south. Two entrances coming in off of 35th Avenue, and again, pulled quite a ways back. Go to the next slide, please. Here's, again, working with the LCRD and some of the citizens around, we've improved our theme walls, et cetera. And so you can see that, again, 35th Avenue will be on your south, and those light blue color walls are those primary theme walls. We'll show you a picture of that in a second. But those are set back quite a ways from 35th Avenue. View fencing is there. That's what you see in the yellow. Next slide. Here's pictures of some of these walls. Again, I think our design team's done an excellent job here. Next slide. Just, this is an interesting one, too, because as we started the original process, and you might say, hey, Reese, what would a typical subdivision look like here? Well, we'd have lots pushed to the perimeter. We'd have lots back to back, and if you look at this site plan, there's not a single lot that touches our perimeter, and that was intentional after working with the citizens. But look at some of those buffers there, gone 35th Avenue, 68, 174. To our south side, where there's actually a canal, that we measured at 60 feet in width, I mean, you're getting some significant distances between that and homes to the south. To our east, again, we've got 60 and 66 feet at the narrowest parts. And with the exception of two lots here, I can't find any other lot that backs up to another lot. That's a very unique design. So I'm hopeful that even from our good folks that are here, who I respect, that they'll at least agree with us that this is a well-designed, well-thought-out plan. Next slide. So concerns that we've had, heard from our January meeting, were density and lot sizes, and happy to share thoughts on that also. But again, density is 1.74. That's compatible with what's going on around us, in the general area, et cetera, and we'll share some more thoughts on that. Next slide, please. So you'll see a slide a little bit later from one of our neighbors that's here. That slide really focuses on what's happening to the south and doesn't give you a full picture. So I wanted to give you something a little bit more. There in red is us, and we're at 1.74, and you say, well, Reese, what's the 2.15 adjusted? And the reason that's important here is because these adjusted densities really take into calculation how much area you're preserving, or mountain slopes, not open space, but mountain slopes, because part of this property has some mountain slope on it. So when I adjust it, I get to 2.15. But look at Whispering Hills, right across the street. And these numbers come right from their plat. You're at 1.46, but 1.99 when you take out their hillside protected areas. Carver Canyon, which just had a neighborhood meeting and is processing through the system now in the city of Phoenix, and based on our attendance at that meeting, a lot of folks were in support of it, they've got a density proposed of 1.16, which sounds really low until you adjust it for all of the hillside protection that they're required to do. And when you get that number, you're at 3.4. And then just go north of us a little bit, and you can see some of those densities, including the Liv Levine at 17 dwelling units to the acre. So there's a lot more happening around the area. So when we, as a society, talk about inclusiveness and diversity, et cetera, to me, those principles apply everywhere, including housing. The question in my mind becomes, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, can I do that without disrupting anyone else? Am I dumping traffic necessarily into their neighborhood? Am I backing up too many homes? Am I causing something that really upsets the existing land patterns or their way of life? And the answer to every one of those checkmarks here is no. This is a well-thought-out, well-planned, well-designed, with citizen input project. So that's probably what I really wanted to share with you at this point. Let me pause there and answer questions that the commission may have, but I really think, and again, your staff here has looked at this carefully. This is a really well-done project.
Thank you. Are there any questions by the commission for Mr. Anderson at this time? Okay, we'll go ahead and reserve some time for you, as you requested, to address any concerns as they come. All right, we will go ahead and move into some of the other, those that have come to talk in opposition or support. We'll go ahead and start with those that are, we'll go in person first. I think that's what we do. Let's do that. I will go ahead and ask, is it Sid Manning? All right. There's many in the emails, and then those that have requested to give their time to you, and we appreciate that by the community when they can do that. So we will give you a good amount of time here to present.
Oh, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chairman Limblum, and I appreciate you being willing to share the visuals from the community as well. Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Sid Manning. I live at 3220 West Seton Drive. I'm a 22-plus-year Levine resident, and I can see this property from my home. So I will be affected by what is developed here. I've also been active in the community with development projects, pardon me, over the last, oh my gosh, almost 20 years. I do support compatible and responsible development and growth, but this project isn't compatible with the area. Density has been and is the number-one issue. Mr. Anderson liked to focus on all of the icing and the decorations on the cake, but the applicant has refused to address the cake itself. They've known density has been the issue. They've ignored it and ignored the community input since the January 6th meeting, which is the only neighborhood meeting that they've had. If you go to the next slide, please. The applicant inaccurately states that the city is trending away from 0 to 1 densities in this area. This map, and then when we go to the next slide, you'll see that that's not true. You know, the applicant is very narrowly focused on comparing their project to only two other developments. That's Carver Canyon and Whispering Hills. Let me talk about Whispering Hills first. That's a much lower density of 1.1 DUA, and is just north of the Carver foothills, which provide a significant physical buffer from the higher densities from Dobbin's north to baseline. Carver Canyon, let's talk about that, number 2. That is the very, very small orange spot that you see on the corner of the Carver foothills in that visual. It's a sore thumb. It's a 20-acre parcel, and I've been engaged in every iteration. There's been at least seven or eight iterations of that case since 2007. And at that time, in '07, it was a former city councilman that ignored the huge outpouring of opposition from the community and pushed through that high-density case. The city had an obligation, and they still have an obligation, to revert the zoning per ordinance G 5020. They have failed to do so since 2011. Myself, and many, many other citizens of that area and the broader community, have worked tirelessly for years to right that wrong. There may be, there may be a current proposal to reduce the GPA and zoning density to something that is compatible with that site, that is barely moving through the process. Unfortunately, the applicant's comparison to these two cases is very disingenuous, and it's unrealistic. We all know, I feel a bit insulted, as an educated citizen on planning and zoning matters, that they continue to reiterate to me and to you and the city about adjusted density. The calculation for density is gross acres and number of lots. If you go to the next slide, please. Now, the applicant completely ignores comparing their plan to the vast number of acre-plus lots that you can see here, right, that border to their south, to the north, to the east, and to the south. I'm to the south. The SRP canal is not a buffer, okay? They also fail to compare their inferior plan to the southeast corner of Carver, Seton, and 35th Avenue, which is at RE 35 zoning in the city, and just barely over 1 DUA. That is a very, very compatible, very large lot, mostly 1-acre homes, that really match the neighborhood. That developer chose to work with me, my neighbors, and the broader community, back when that was approved and platted, and we went arm-in-arm to approve it, because it is compatible, responsible land use, and it mirrors the area. As you can see, the suburban plan does not, as the applicant claims in their narrative, seamlessly fit into the existing fabric of the area. It's just not true. Their plan has 76% small suburban lots. It is very pretty. Cut it in half, as I said to Mr. Anderson this morning, cut it in half, and voila, you've got a cake now that matches with all the rest of the window dressing. By the way, those LCRD meetings were not public meetings. Those were subcommittee meetings. Those were subcommittee meetings, and I'm honestly very surprised. There's no record that LCRD members said, yeah, keep it under two and we're good. I, I would highly doubt that's the case. I was on that board, and I'd be very, very surprised. Again, these large acre-plus lots, that's what makes Levine unique. People come here. They come to this specific area for that and for the space. 1.74 is still 1.74. You get into that 1 or 1.1 range, we've got a great conversation here. I and my neighbors would like nothing better than to do that and to come back to this body to say, we support something that is truly compatible and that we can be proud of. Unfortunately, I feel like the applicant is just sort of checking the box and trying to take the path of least resistance here, and it's very, very unfortunate. If you go to the next slide, please, this is my last slide. As you can see, this is the area, it's drone, it's a drone aerial footage from Carver foothills, south of Carver foothills to South Mountain. And that area spans from 27th to 51st avenues. People come to here for the low-density, one-plus acre lots. Higher-density plans, like what the applicant is proposing, it will negatively infect, it will negatively impact not only the existing residents, but the future residents. If the applicant was truly willing to work with us on density, they've had plenty of time since the neighborhood meeting on January 6th of this year. Sunrise Ranch could be, it really could be, in addition to the area if they're willing to address density. Not just focus on the icing and the decorations. Let's focus on the substance of the cake. So with that, I respectfully request that this commission deny all three cases as filed and instead remand this applicant back to work with the community for a compatible zoning and plan that matches the current Levine area plan designation of zero-to-one DUA rural and open space. If you have any questions for me, I would really be happy to answer them, and I appreciate your time here today. Thank you.
Thank you for your well-prepared presentation. Is there any, um, questions at this time for Mr. Manning? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and ask, uh, next person that's, um, wish to speak is John Komodo. Welcome, Mr. Komodo. We, we will try to keep these comments to three minutes is what we, what we try to do. I don't usually enforce it super heavy, but, um, any, and, and try to say things that are maybe different than what others have said, uh, unless you just really feel strongly to say it again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. I will strive to do that. My name is John Komodo. My address is 3216 West Ansel Road, Levine 85339. My property is located approximately a third of a mile south of the Sunrise Ranch property. I've been a member of the community since 1977. Way, way too much time, according to some of my neighbors, but, uh, but it's been a good long haul. And in that time, I've, I've been involved with at least three of the major, uh, planning efforts in our area. The 1992 Land Use Plan, the 1998, uh, Southwest Growth Study, and more recently in 2016, the Revised, uh, Phoenix Land Use Plan. So, uh, I've been at it for a while. To be fair, the plan before you, for consideration, has many positive attributes, as, as you can see. Uh, some of the more striking ones that we would like to see retained as the project goes through the process is the Serpentine Layout, which is a welcome departure from your normal subdivision grid. The, uh, unique, uh, situation where there's no lots that are back-to-back, that affords a lot more privacy for those residents, creates value for those lots, and affords access to the direct open space behind those lots. And last, of course, the provision of the 46% open space. That's very welcome addition for our area. And along with the usable outdoor amenities, it's a real plus because it creates a park-like setting in our community, and that's very desirable. If these attributes are integrated into a revised, lower-density, enlarged-lot plan, that would be a real asset for the neighborhood as well as our Levine community. But this is where the rub comes, is that in context, this is a tremendous misfit with the Levine area plans and is totally out of sync with the existing adjacent R43 zoning found on the north, the east, and the south. We've got some tremendous potential for land use conflicts, especially with, uh, rural, uh, suburban and agricultural uses butting right up against a suburban, higher-density, smaller-lot community. So one of the primary goals of the Levine area plans was to focus on the preservation of our rural heritage, especially in the valley and the slopes defined by Carver Mountain and Phoenix South Mountain Park. As a matter of fact, the City of Phoenix in their 1998 plan went so far as to create a special land use classification at zero-to-one dwelling units per acre. This is a clear case for spot zoning. We've got a discordant, mismatched land use butting up against rural properties. And that's not what, what we're trying to foster here, so. While the land use plan encouraged the mix of varying residential lot types and densities, it also emphasized uses, uh, for density transition. So for instance, one of the, uh, achievements of the, the former land use plans was to create a special density transition area for the R43 at no more than 35,000 square feet, and that would be the equivalent of your R135 lots. As the growth of Levine's tech sector and Commerce Park surges along the Loop 202 freeway, large executive lots are needed to balance off the overabundance of smaller lots existing in our area. And I'm ready to wrap this up now. This site can help accomplish this goal. Please deny the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the zoning case, and the, uh, site plat as presented. We encourage the applicant to continue working for the compromised density that better preserves Levine's, uh, best equivalent of paradise value. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your time, your well-thought-out presentation as well.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Schlosser here. I have a question for Mr. Komodo.
Yes, um, go ahead, Commissioner Schlosser. He has a question for you. We'll try to speak and try to speak up a little bit so we can hear you better.
Okay. Sorry, I'm on my, my own line. John Komodo and I go back probably 25 years planning Levine together. And it's no joke, he spent literally thousands of hours in, uh, planning this entire area. But I did have one question, uh, that was brought up by Ms. Manning. And the question for John is, are you still part of the LCRD after all these years? Which is Levine Citizens for Responsible Development.
Could, could you repeat that question just so we all can hear it?
I'm asking Mr. Komodo if he's still part of the LCRD, the Levine Citizens for Responsible Development.
Okay. Luke, the answer is yes. I've, I've, uh, concentrated my heart and soul to working with the LCRD, the Levine Village Planning Committee, and the Levine Planning Committees, uh, for, over the last 45 years.
Yes, well, the premise for my question is she mentioned that, that, uh, and I do not know this applicant at all, uh, but he brought up that the meeting with the LCRD, that they were fine with densities and that on this project with anything under two dwelling units per acre. Were you involved in those meetings? It doesn't, normally when an applicant comes, they're not gonna mess with the community or stir things up if that wasn't the case. And I would be shocked if that was the case. And I was just asking you what the feedback from the LCRD was with this applicant during those meetings about density.
I, I was involved in some of the subcommittee meetings early on. That density may have been proposed by, uh, some of the other members. But I also recall that, that no formal action was taken on that particular issue. As a matter of fact, uh, uh, the, the case has only been discussed at a subcommittee level, but, uh, the, the case was never brought before the full committee.
What was the reason for that?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll have to defer that to the applicant. Luke, I'm not, uh, sure why that, uh, wasn't, uh, followed through with the formal public action by, by the, uh, Levine Planning Committee.
No problem. Well, again, I just wanted to, uh, to, uh, ask you that point because, uh, like I said, I would be shocked if the applicant were to receive that feedback from the LCRD and then try to pull the wool over everybody's eyes. And so it sounds like they got possibly mixed messages. I don't know. Maybe the applicant can, can, uh, speak further to that after all of the speakers. That's all I had. Good, good hearing your voice. I can't really see you, but, uh, good hearing your voice after all these years.
And yourself as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schlosser. Any other questions at this time for this speaker? Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we'll go ahead and call up, um, Jordan Bennett. If he would, if he is here and would like to speak. Sorry, Jordan. This one, I might have found this one on the ground in the back there. I thought I dropped it, but it must be from somebody else, maybe. Or, um, yep, and that would be, Richard Bennett would be, I, there was two of them that were right here on the ground. I thought I dropped them, so I did not drop them. Oh, are they consent items? Okay, thank you. So I did have them. I just missed them. But, uh, are, are there any on the GoToWebinar that wish to speak? Okay, let's go there.
Chairman Lindblom, uh, we had two registered, uh, pre-registered to speak, uh, John Knight and Dean Fairchild. Neither of them have appeared on the webinar, so I can't link them to you. I'm not sure what happened. And there are no others on the webinar who have indicated a desire to speak.
Okay, thank you. And I, I did see in the emails, and it might have been them as well, a couple asked that, um, their time be given to Sid. So, um, that might have been part of, part of the deal as well. All right, if there are no other, um, others that wish to speak, we'll go ahead and close the pub. Well, we'll go ahead and invite the applicant to come back up and, um, maybe address some of the things that were discussed today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Let me start by addressing maybe the elephant in the room, which was raised by Commissioner Schlosser, and which is, um, our conversations with the LCRD, which we've met with the subcommittee twice. That is absolutely accurate, and I vow to you that happened. In those meetings, there was a handful of people. One time we met at Burger King, another time we met at a pizza place, I'll forget the name of it now. We, uh, had some food and some soda pop together as we talked about the plan. Lots of different voices happening, lots of different voices speaking, sharing ideas, shooting things at you. I will avow to you that in that conversation, uh, conversations were had that said, look, we understand where you're at. Keep R118. Keep your density less than two. Those conversations had. So with the utmost of respect for, uh, Mr. John Komodo, who I have grown to like personally, and I am not refuting anything he has said, sharing with you, uh, my recollection of those meetings where I was in personally. That's how it unfolded. As far as going to the full committee of the LCRD, I've, forgive me, I didn't think that was necessary in this instance because of our multiple conversations with them in person and over the telephone. For example, last week I was on the phone with Dan Pinton, who is also a member of the subcommittee. I've met with him twice and talked to him on the phone multiple times. And my conversation with Dan last week was this. Reese, I'm good. I, I don't have any other concerns. Let me talk with the rest of the group, and I'll get back to you. I haven't heard from him. And obviously, today, whether or not they communicated, I don't know. But everyone has personal opinions to share. So that's the answer to, uh, Mr. Schlosser's question to the board. But I vow to you that those subcommittee meetings did happen and those conversations were there. Please know, we would never, ever try to pull the wool or misrepresent anything we've ever done. Okay?
Thank you.
That, that answers that one.
Okay, yeah.
I do, let me, let me share this, which is that, um, I can show you pictures of the proposed homes if you'd like to see them. They're well-done. They're, uh, opportunity for RV garages on, on these lots. So when we talk about posted-sized lots or cramming something in, just simply not the case. Um, I, you, you heard, right, that people liked the plan. They just wished the density was different. And so to me, we're really coming down to this overall concern about density. And I, I would just say to you, uh, please, uh, members of the commission, to think about, in this area, as we transition from the arterial road going in, this is a fair, is a fair request, and it's well-thought-out. We went back and we tried to do our best to map all of these, and, and I, we didn't get a full, complete map. I've got one in the presentation. But let me just tell you where, where they came. So there were multiple individuals from the same household. So somewhere between 30 and 39 is what we, we count. But from 0 to 300 feet, we, we were able to find zero people in opposition. From 300 to 1,000, there were two. From 1,000 feet to half-mile, 10 people submitted things in opposition. From a half-mile to one-mile, four. Beyond one-mile, four. And then there were 11 that didn't provide an address. So my, my conclusion that I draw from that is to say, yes, there are people that have legitimate concerns, and we respect those opinions. But as far as negatively affecting anything that's happening in the area, the people that are right around us are not complaining. And so I would say to you, members of the commission, this is a good request. It's a fair request. It is consistent with what's happening in the overall area. We, and we've showed you those materials. We would urge your support on this, this plan. I'm happy to answer any more specific questions that anyone has, and I hope I've adequately answered Commissioner Schlosser's question.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any, uh, questions? Go ahead, Vice Chair Schlosser.
I was just thanking the applicant. He answered my question. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? The applicant?
Uh, this is Commissioner Mitchell. Mr. Anderson, and this is not entirely relevant, but just, just to ask my curiosity, uh, related to the LCRD, there's been some discussion about a, a subcommittee. What, what subcommittee is that? Is there like a zoning subcommittee part of the LCRD?
Um, I, I would invite Mr. Komodo to give you that answer, Commissioner Mitchell. What I know is that, as I reach out to the key leaders of the LCRD, and I say, hey, let's, let's chat, then they set it up, and I, I attend. So that's the, I don't make that invite list, um, but I think this is a key subcommittee. Some of these, and Mr. Komodo, I know, and others really, uh, have put their, like Commissioner Schlosser said, they put their blood and sweat into this. They've lived there for a long time, and we're happy to continue the conversations, respect their opinions. I think that you, we, at the end of the day, we just come down to a, a simple but respectful disagreement over density.
Understood. Thank you for your answer.
Any other questions at this time? Thank, thank you. Commissioner Mitchell, would you like, um, Mr. Komodo to come up and ask that question, answer that question? Or, or did, were you satisfied with that?
Uh, it was really just to satisfy my own curiosity. So if any of the other commissioners are interested, um, you know, Mr. Komodo, Mr. Komodo, uh, can certainly come back up. But I don't think it's particularly necessary.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, having, uh, heard that, and we'll go ahead and close public comment and open up this case for discussion amongst the commission.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Schlosser?
Yeah, Vice Chair Schlosser, go ahead.
I'm ju, this is not my district, but, uh, I thought I'd jump ahead of everybody here. This is normally the point where Commissioner Montoya, which is her district, This is normally the point where Commissioner Montoya, which is her district, usually defers to me to sort of give the rest of the commission the flavor for the area because that's the, that's where I grew up, is in Levine. And I've known Mr. Komodo that long. I remember, I don't know Ms. Manning very well, but I know she's been active for lots of years. But I worked with, uh, John Komodo, he mentioned the nineteen ninety-eight Southwest Growth Study, which they incorporated into the Phoenix General Plan. And way back then, if you can imagine, I've li, literally almost doubled in age since we worked on that together. Um, and the, the dividing line at the time, I know that the public hearing's closed, but the, sort of the taboo line was Dobbins Road, which is about a half mile north of this property. And where the densities south of Dobbins would be like, like, uh, Mr. Komodo said, to preserve the heritage in the lower densities of the area. Um, but Levine's a whole different place than it was back in nineteen ninety-eight. Where I grew up, it was farm fields for two miles in one direction and a mile on the other. And since then, things have obviously evolved, new retail, new subdivisions. I did look up on the assessor's website, the, the applicant mentioned the densities, and I guess my first thought, I wanted to commend the applicant with their density one point seven four. They probably could have proposed even more density than that and possibly been successful. But I, more importantly, I looked up not just densities, but lot sizes to put it into perspective. And in their application, they mentioned Whispering Hills, which is adjacent to the west. And I think the average lot size of this application is seventy-foot wide lots. And the same holds true for the new subdivision on the west side. I think it's Maricay Homes that's building that. A quarter mile north of this application, and I think that zoning was in place way back when, those lots, that density has to be about eight to the acre, right at the corner of Thirty-Fifth and Dobbins, the southeast corner. Those lots are like forty-foot by seventy-foot wide lots. And then the last one I'll mention is a quarter mile northeast south of the La Salvia Dairy. Those lots are, that's KB Home, those lots are forty-five by one-twenty's, I think. So this area has evolved over time. There's definitely, south of the mountain, lower densities, one lot per acre, or one unit per acre and, and greater. But as the applicant said, it's a good transition, uh, with everything in the area and times change and, and I think this density that's proposed is, is appropriate for the times and for the area. And I'm in support of, in favor of, uh, this project. Sorry for rambling on. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Vice Chair Schlosser. Any other?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Dan Zizen.
Thank you. I'm in this, I'm in this district and I actually live in Levine. Um, I know the area very well. I just want to say first, you know, thank you to Sid and John for making such a great presentation, um, you know, well-thought-out, and, uh, really do appreciate, you know, input that's well-thought-out like that. And my, my thought on this is, is, you know, the, the, the project is a really nice project. And, you know, there's always going to be some people that don't like, you know, everything about it, but overall, this is a very, very nice project. And I look at, I, I look at it as, you know, how it fits the area and other places and how that, that's been developed like this. And I looked at Talasera on Nineteenth Avenue, that, that development had, had fit in really nice without really noticing, um, you know, a big difference in, in density. Um, so I am supportive of this, this case. Um, I, I think as we go forward and as, as things get developed, I've seen in Levine, that all, all that happens is the, the density gets worse and worse and worse, or more, or denser and denser and denser. So, um, you know, one point seven four on this piece, I think is, is, it's a nice project and I, I, I'm in support of it. So, um, I just wanted to let that be known.
Thank you, Commissioner Dan Zizen. Something to say?
I don't need to.
Somebody else, it sounds like Commissioner Swartz wants to talk more than you. So, go ahead, Commissioner Swartz.
Do you want me to go first?
Yes, please go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I, I first just want to point out a couple important things to me. Um, those were two incredible speakers who I think gave some, not only accurate testimony, but I think some important things that I try to be a great listener, um, because I think it's important to listen to neighborhoods. I never heard Mr. Anderson, when he gave his presentation, talk about being at a Burger King, and someone may have said, as long as you keep it under two, we're fine. What he presented was that the LCRD said that as long as you keep it under two, we're fine. Those are two completely different things. And so when the speaker said she felt he was disingenuous, I'm going to agree with her. Um, I, I just can't imagine that he wouldn't have had an email or an affidavit that said that, that it came officially, officially from the LCRD. And I'll just tell you that I agree with the, the speakers, that this should be continued for that reason, and I don't think that he met with the full committee, and I've not heard a good reason why he did not. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swartz.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, I'm gonna go to, uh, uh, okay, was that Commissioner Schlosser?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond back to Commissioner Swartz real quick. I have a good guess on who he met with at Burger King, because there's been ten thousand meetings held at that same Burger King, it, it, uh, on Broadway, uh, there. And, and, uh, I guess my thought is, with the LCRD, if everybody was, having served down there on the Levine Village for eight years, if the community was truly up in arms, we would have a hundred speakers, not, not, uh, two or three speakers. So, um, I don't know, like I said, I think wires may have been crossed there, but, but, uh, I guess that's my response to your concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schlosser. We're gonna go to Commissioner Arnett, who has waited patiently.
Oh, I'm fine. Um, just my thoughts on this case. So frankly, I don't care what happened at the Burger King, because we're here it is a zoning case today, but, um, um, great presentations. Those are great presentations, and this is no different than where I grew up on the East Valley, right? Where you have all this open expansive land. I currently live in what used to be that. And, and, and this is that battle with development, with, with just the need for more housing. Um, and this is why we do planning, and this is why staff is so good at what they do. And, um, i- i- it's hard because the, the way to make everything not change is to acquire that land and never change it, right? That, that, the property owners, as long as they don't infringe on other people's rights, one thing we can expect that ten years from now, this area will look different. It will. It has for the last, yeah, well, forever it has been. So, so I, I appreciate what the, the speaker said. I mean, there were great points, there were great presentations, and, um, and I would, I would actually agree with, uh, with the second, uh, speaker opposed that, that, that's what this looks like, right? You have to give something to, uh, you know, for this larger density. We have these buffers. I even wrote down that it's close to half of the land is going to remain wide open. You'll never get that with the current situation. Well, I guess you could if nobody ever, but you could do one-acre lots legally. Um, so I, I, I guess I'm really in support of this, 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 uh, presentation because of all the things that were mentioned by the speakers, but also by what I've seen in this presentation. My hot buttons are traffic. My hot buttons, does it really change the feel? Will it be more dense? Of course it will. I don't know how to get over that hurdle and still have pe, have this area be what it has been and will be. Um, but I appreciate that that balance, if there is such a thing, um, I know we'll all, I agree with the first speaker said, that we will all have different opinions, right? We will all have different opinions. Uh, but I appreciate the applicant working with, um, with staff the best they can to create a feel, even though, yes, within that buffer, it'll be much more dense, but it'll feel like an open area, even though it won't be. Uh, so I guess with, with all that, I guess I would be in support of the project.
Yeah, I'd just like to make, um, a couple comments. One, in five years of being on this, uh, commission, these were probably the two best, um, presentations by opposition that I've heard in preparation and also commitment and, um, and, uh, in content and, um, respectful of time. So, uh, growing up in Gilbert that once looked like Levine and does not look like anything like Levine anymore, um, this, this body has heard me speak to that. Um, I'm very sensitive to, uh, what projects will do to the nature and, and, um, the feel of the community, and that was what I was listening to today, and that was what I, um, thought of as I listened to the presentation by the applicant. And as I pondered what happened to my hometown, um, and the densities that are just, uh, I don't know, we had a, I guess, a, uh, everyone decided to see how many houses they could pack into a small area. And, um, I don't feel that here, but I'm very sensitive to the comments and, um, and that were made today. And so, um, I just wanted to voice those few things without really showing my cards, but, um, thank you to those that were here today. I really appreciate it, on both the applicant and those that spoke. Any other comments?
Chairman Lindblom, I, this is David. I passed along a note from Dan Pinton. Um, I, I think clarified a question that was asked in the chat. He, um, apparently he's on the LCRD. He, he said they met with the applicant and supported the one point seven four and R one eighteen. Um, we didn't realize he was planning to speak until you had already closed the public. So, I apologize.
All right. Um, thank, thank you for sharing that. Um, any other comments? I don't, entertaining motion. Uh, these have to be dealt as three separate motions, just for the commission to understand. Each case will be a separate motion with a separate roll call. So, um, we will deal with, just for simplicity purposes, it would be CPA two thousand twenty-one zero one two would be the first, uh, motion for approval, denial, or continuance.
Uh, I'll make a motion to support, uh, for approval of CPA two oh two one zero one two.
All right, we have a, um, a motion by Commissioner Dan Zizen to approve CPA two thousand twenty-one zero one two. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Schlosser, second.
All right, we have a second by Vice Chair Schlosser. Um, go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Approve.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zizen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schlosser?
Yeah.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, we have approval of CPA two thousand twenty-one zero one two by a nine-zero vote. Move on to Z two thousand twenty-one zero seven four, if someone would like to make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Dan Zizen. Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. We have a second by Commissioner Lawrence. Let's go ahead and do a roll call, roll call vote.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zizen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schlosser?
Yeah.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, Rosalie. Um, we'll go ahead and move on to S two thousand twenty-one two zero.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Dan Zizen, with a, with a motion to approve S two thousand twenty-one twenty. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner McGee.
All right, Commissioner McGee, yeah, we'll have a second by Commissioner McGee. Um, roll call vote, Ros, Rosalie, please.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zizen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schlosser?
Yeah.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, Rosalie, and, um, thank you to the applicant and to those from the community that came today. Um, yeah, keep, keep fighting for your community. It's awesome to see that kind of, um, passion and support from those in, in the community. Um, is there any additional items by staff to present this time?
No, sir.
All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.